I'm excited to be here. I have to say that out loud. I just cannot say that. Um, we're going to start with accentuate the positive. I don't know who the first person is tonight. Awesome. Welcome to Phoenix High School.
Thank you. Kayla Ross, proud principal of the pirate ship. Hi, everyone. And a couple of things. First, Dave Earhart, our athletic director is out and about as usual. Um, we have some soccer games and such, so he's out supervising those and just being a support. But he did have a couple of accentuate the positives. He wanted to make sure you all heard. The first is that our annual junior pirate athletic league camps are up and running for the fall. We've had great participation with over 70 little cheerleaders who are going to perform at tomorrow night's game. Uh, we have 30 kids in our volleyball camp and a team from the elementary school in Manny's basketball league. We are starting wrestling and basketball camps. I'm in the, in a couple of weeks and we just have had really great turnout. We love having our athletes partner with our younger kids and it's been super great so far. Also, our pirate cheerleading team has doubled in size from a year ago. If you've noticed them at Friday night football games and other events as well. And in addition to running the youth camp, they're also supporting a variety of events around school. And they travel to all of the football games. So we're really excited about how that program is growing. Um, our football program won its first game since the stadium was redone. Um, yeah, we defeated Brookings Harbor on Monday, our JV team. It was the first year in several years that we've had a JV team and we're really excited about growing our program. Um, our varsity football team has lost three games by a combined total of only 14 points. And so we're making some growth there too. Wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And then on the academic front, I did want to let you know that one of the things we're really proud of is yesterday, we did our first pirate PD session where our new instructional coach, Alyssa Barber, um, partnered with teachers to figure out how to use AI to make their jobs a little bit easier. And so it took something that maybe people are a little bit nervous or scared about and just tried it with them. It was 20 minutes and it was an amazing magnificent PD. And that's all for the high school.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Holden. I'm the principal of Talent Middle School. It's nice to see everybody tonight. Uh, definitely one of our highlights was our back to school night last week on Thursday. It was really well attended, probably over 400 people or so were there. Uh, we had a great opening and introduction and then just a really sweet rotation through the classrooms. And the teachers did a great job welcoming families. Families were in the hallways, just looking so happy and um, so complimentary and just said so many nice things about how happy their students are this year. And um, even a couple of parents who said things like, it just, it feels nostalgic and it's like when I went to middle school in a good way. So I said, well, take it. Um, also, I was just over at the cross country meet. Um, that was a really fun event to see everybody out on the Culver field there. Lots of, I think there was probably five or six schools competing and um, it was really fun to see everybody together in the sun on the beautiful day. Um, it was just a really fun community event as well. And uh, big fun at our Bulldog Bucks store opened up yesterday. So again, a huge thanks to Chelsea Winter and the students in the transition program. Our Bulldog student rewards store is now open for students and um, Talent Middle School students were purchasing things and behaving just very, very appropriate during lunch while they were in line and looking at the different items. And so it was just fun to, fun to see that the kids have been rewarded by so many positive things this year. And then they got to use those. We also have some raffles that we do. Um, and there's some other ways that they can earn privileges when they have Bulldog Bucks. So that's been really fun. And overall, just again, a really, a really solid, sweet start to the school year. We've just had so many positives. Also a great video by um, Joe Zavala again, uh, first Sandra Tringalo and her STEM design class that she's doing. So this kind of interactive gumball machine that kids made out of cardboard and straws and kind of plastic things. And that was a really fun competition for our students as well. Thank you so much.
Good evening, board. Heather Lowe, principal over at Talent. Um, nice to see everybody. Um, I too will share our back to school barbecue was awesome. We served over 500 people, which was a lot. So thank you Polly for coming and enjoying the barbecue with us. And thanks to the fire district five for grilling for us and then especially for the PTA who sponsored that. So, and then of course, all of our staff and teachers who just made it a really special evening. We had great feedback on our survey. Speaking of our PTA and how much I love them, we are so grateful for them. This week they brought wildlife images to school and did, um, we literally had the zoo at school, which sometimes school feels like a zoo. So it was quite, it was quite wonderful. And we had a wallaby on the loose for a minute during the K two presentation. It was just circling the gym. Got a little nervous, so they put it away. And my daughter reported that the ha hoop in the gym. I said, what? That's an exciting day at school, but we were just, we know that those special things are really important to kids. And so just grateful that the PTA is willing to support us there. Um, I also wanted to share that last Thursday, Friday, Shauna and I got to head up to the Equity Summit, the COSA Equity Summit in Salem and Rosario joined us and she did a great presentation to the uh, our community in Oregon about the community care grant and the work that we're doing. So just a shout out to Rosario for her presentation. And then last but not least, I want to say thanks publicly to Cheryl and Alma in my office because holy cow, running the front office of any school is insane. Um, you're responding to parents, to boo boos, the teachers' needs, to classified needs, to just random people calling. So I just want to say publicly that I really appreciate them. And that's it.
Good evening, board. My name is Shauna Sly. Oh, my god. Um, principal of Phoenix Elementary School. I'm going to stay seated because if I stand, I'm actually going to shrink. Um, uh, I, uh, continuing with Heather's uh, message about kind of bringing fun to school. We had two fun events happen at PES recently, actually three. We had our back to school barbecue. It was torrential downpour the day of, so we had to like move everything into um, the cafeteria. But we had such a great turnout. We had like our staff pivoted really quickly. It was a beautiful event. Polly, thank you for being there. Um, so just, it was lovely and our teachers and our families all expressed it being an impactful night for them. Additionally, we had our first assembly in, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. We invited a professional salsa dancer to come give us salsa dancing lessons. And I didn't anticipate this, but when the dancer and Jenny Brown were doing a model of salsa, whoa, the kids were like, I love, like, I think it was big uproar. Super fun though and engaging. And then finally, this week, we also had it on the same day, National Taco Day, which the Dexos served some really great in um, fun tacos at our school, but it was also National Walk to School Day. So you can imagine when we have kids get dropped off on the bus on the corner of First and Main. Like I wish, I wish I could just show you the video because we have a little girl who laughed the entire way. She's in kindergarten. She giggled because she got to walk to school. So good things are happening at PES. Thanks.
Thanks Shauna. Good evening. Kent Valier, principal at Orchard Hill. I'm really uh, excited. Last night I attended my very first Orchard Hill PTA. Uh, at the high school, you know, the parent support situation is a little different than a traditional PTA. So it was fun to get a, get back again into the elementary uh, PTA scene. It was uh, very successful. Our attendance doubled, I understand, from many meetings last year. We elected a board. Um, and they're well on their way planning the trunk or treat. I believe that's a trunk or treat event that will happen at Orchard Hill on the 20th of October. I know that's a little early, but there's homecoming here at the high school and we didn't want to kind of compete with those events. Um, also, I would like to say, uh, one of the leading indicators of a high achieving, successful school is parent support. And I'm very, very thankful to the great parents that are there at Orchard Hill and I intend to cultivate that. Um, because that is a really positive way to get achievement up. Also, I want to recognize Andrea Nicholson. She's our music teacher and the investment that you guys made several years ago in music. She's going to start a bucket drumming uh, class for our fourth and fifth graders. Uh, we probably will not be visiting the Vegas Strip to do bucket drumming in the near future, so. Uh, but somebody did suggest that, but I don't think that's the best idea. Um, so I, I, I'm grateful for, and thank you for your investment in music. It, it reaches a lot of kids. It also helps a lot of research how those events and music support mathematics achievement as well. And also, I continue to be really thrilled about our attendance every single day, except for one. We've been at or above 90%. So I'm really uh, overjoyed with that. Aaron Santi, PTRA.
Thanks Kent. Not quite as exciting as that, um, but somewhat exciting. As you guys probably remember, we do a Friday in PTRA, we do a Friday in-person day generally focused around uh, STEAM. And so really, really, we're excited about the changes we've got this year in that. Um, we're opening it up to our middle school students and we've been having middle school, middle school students come in for that. So now all of our kids K to eight are coming in, uh, optional of course, but many of them are coming in. We've incorporated more science projects and art in the park days. Uh, tomorrow we'll be making solar eclipse viewers and we'll be discussing the solar eclipse, which will be cool. Um, and our next science project is going to be making lava lamps. So that's going to be awesome too. Uh, attendance at the in-person class is more than doubled as compared to last year. And we're happy to be uh, expanding opportunities for in-person opportunities for all of our kids, but especially middle school. That's it for PTRA. I don't know if Amy's here. Right? Guess that's it?
Thank you. Amy did submit something and it's in our board, um, in our board book showing um, new staff and uh, returning staff and also about the taco day showcase. I was really sad because I was out of town for the taco day. I was um, for work and I didn't get to go. But I didn't know if anybody else here got a chance to go have the tacos. Really bummed about that. Um, but I, you know, I, I want to say, I'm just going to start off with accentuate the positive because I did do this, this, the cruise around to all the buildings um, last week. And I do notice um, the long hours that Sedexo puts in and what they do for us here. And I see them at every one of these events that I attended last week and how they're showing up for us in every way. So I, I really appreciate them um, and Amy and all she does. And I want to speak a little bit about, I, I started at Talent, uh, Phoenix Elementary School on, I guess it was Tuesday night, right? I think that's when it was. And then um, after, went, I went there um, and saw, you know, all the kids, all the parents were kind of in the classroom and the kids are out in the, out on the fields after torrential downpour. And I'm sure they came home and had to like undress outside because it was pretty crazy. But the amount of folks and I walked around the classrooms and I, I um, got to see some new teachers and poke my head in the room. And it was very cool to um, see what was happening at Phoenix Elementary. Had a daughter who went there for a couple of years and it was great to go back in the kindergarten hall and to see what was happening there. Um, and then that night I went to soccer game, which was in the pouring rain. They lost. It was very sad, down to the wire with that. And then the next day was Talent Elementary School, which is where I went to elementary school. I'm sad, I'm glad to say that. And I was shocked at the amount. Luckily then the sun was out and there was so many people um, in attendance at that event and so well attended. And I do see the firefighters at, it's, it's a great way to meal plan for the week. You just have to go around to all the schools and eat dinner every night. So I didn't have to worry about that. So, um, and I know they got a call during that time. They were at the, at, having this event and some of them had to leave and other people had to step in. But um, that was really great to see such the great involvement for Talon Elementary. And then Orchard Hill hadn't been over there for a while, hadn't been in the new, like, I'm, shame on me. Uh, in the new cafeteria outside, which is such a cool place uh, for everybody to be in. Seeing a lot of friends and people I hadn't seen for a while at that event and then walking around the classrooms and experiencing that. It was a great honor to be there. Um, ended up the week at Talent Middle School. And I want to commend you, um, Catherine, and she did a presentation and she talked about really hard things that need to be talked about to both middle school and, well, all, all school age kids about using our phones and how we're using our phones. And um, I felt like she um, talked about some hard topics that, that parents need to be aware of. And um, I feel like I was in the stands there and I felt like I'm sad that we have to have these conversations about things that happen, but I'm glad that you're bringing it to the forefront and that you're doing that um, for our community. And I appreciate that so much. Um, and mostly I saw what it takes to put on these events and the parents and the staff. And they've already been there all freaking day long and it's eight o'clock and they're still there and cleaning up and showing up. And also our community um, showing up in those spaces. It, it humbles me because um, I've been a part of this community my whole life and it makes me really happy to see the involvement that we have. And it's such a special thing that we have here for sure. Um, so that's, anyone else have any more accentuate the positive? Okay. You have to turn on, hold on. There you go.
That's a weird, we're back to everybody here. I, I wanted to share something with. Well, I start my day, I watch the Today Show, okay? And they had something on this last week that I, it really got me. Uh, and they pointed out that uh, October is anti-bullying month. And, and we all know about bullying where you put people down and physically mentally and all of this stuff. But uh, what they brought out is what about self-bullying? And it made me think, you know, wow, that, that's pretty. Yeah. And, and then what they did is they had a group of people that uh, would, would put them, they would say, you know, they'd look in the mirror or something like that and say, you know, you're fat, you're skinny or whatever. And uh, but then they had them do it to somebody else and it was very difficult for them to do, except for the bullying, of course. But anyway, self-bullying. I just wanted to share that. But that was cool.
Thank you, Rick. Anyone else? Okay, we can move on to citizen comments. Um, I want to say that we had two comments um, submitted that are in our, in our board book. Um, one from Amy Bartlett, which is ODP um, parent who just got their um, student into the kindergarten there. And also from Erin Mahaney, who was teaching at ODP about our Culver Road project. Both of these kind of included that. And I don't know if we have anyone online. Dawn, I always look to you for that. Okay. And do we have anything filled out for our comments here? Okay. So as always, you're welcome to make public comment. You can do that online. And if you don't know how to find that, let me know. I can guide you to the link. And also there's cards over there that you can fill out to uh, speak at the board meetings. So we'll go to Brett for superintendent report.
Thank you, Acting Chair Fairmont. Good job.
Thank you.
Your campus unable to be here, so thanks for stepping in to run this.
I want to recognize Chris for all he does every time for us. It's amazing. And he teaches all day and then comes here to set this up and does amazing things for us. Thank you.
Okay. Um, thank you. I just have a couple of things. I was uh, mentioned um, a little bit. We did have a master plan Culver meeting before this meeting. Uh, it was well attended. It was, uh, I just appreciate ZCS and uh, Z uh, CSA who are really our land consultants and uh, our master planning uh, firm that we've used. And, and uh, they've just done an amazing job and really appreciate them kind of showing a picture of what the feedback was over the last several months. Um, that's in your board packet as well. At a glance, report cards are in your board packet. Uh, those were um, I think released earlier this week. You uh, will see that's every school that we have, including PTRA and ATI. Um, and there's a few things that just to highlight, I know um, there are some positive trends and then there are some areas that we really need to um, you know, address. And I think our strategic plan and the things we have in place um, are prime to address those uh, moving forward. So I look forward to uh, improving those uh, numbers where we need to improve and keep doing the things that are working well. Um, that's all I had. Just want to let you know, next meeting I will be out of town. Tiffany Lambert will be out of town as well. So Jessica will be stepping in for us. So she acts like she maybe not heard that. I think she's, so that was a reminder too, maybe. So, but uh, thank you.
I'm glad you're going to be doing that. We'll all be here to support you. Um, we next have our consent agenda and um, we have it here for approval.
I would like to add something to consent agenda. I would like to add discussion of the homecoming parade um, as item H seven at the end of the information and discussion. If that's okay with the rest of the board.
Sounds great. Any one second? Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Sarah. And then we have our minutes from our last board meeting there. And we'll move to the action items for tonight's um, meeting. Brent, do you want to say something about that?
Just uh, we shared those last meeting about the surplus items and um, yeah, we'll be looking forward to getting those off our, out of our facilities and off to auction.
I thought maybe he was going to say something about the trailer, but he didn't, so.
I was going to ask you.
Which van trailer is going up for surplus? Audio, okay. Because they found in the new white ones?
They got all the shelving built into it and now it's ready to be, they, they used it most of last year. And Mr. Gross told me that they're ready to get rid of it.
I had thought they wanted to, so that's why I was a little surprised. I'm behind the curve.
Dawn?
Um, I just had a question. If this is question time, I think it is. Um, where do they? I know they go to auction. Where, can you remind me where they go for auction?
Not exactly, because we've switched companies several times. It really just depends on what auctioneer is having the soonest auction.
Okay.
Um, but we do put it on the facilities page on the, when it's going to be and where it's going to be uh, as soon as we know.
Perfect. I'll watch the facilities page. Thank you.
And I can give you a heads up if you want, so. And as far as the two trailers, during COVID and during construction, when they needed more storage, they were using the second trailer. Now that they're in their facility, they've got everything moved over and the stuff that was just being stored in the old trailer is in the school. So that's why there's no more need.
I think I thought it was going to be potentially used for props or create, so that, but if he said they're good, then they're good. But I, I think I had heard that potential prop moving or cooking space or, you know, so I had heard different things. But again, that was some time ago. So things have changed. All good.
Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I move to approve the items listed as presented as surplus.
Set them down.
Thank you Rebecca. Thank you Nancy. We'll take it to a vote. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Rick? Dawn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. We have brief. We're moving quickly. Michael will be happy about that, right? Um, so do we want to take that recess? No. Okay. Let's move, let's move to our information discussion then. And should we say if you would, if you would like to leave us, you can?
You can stay. Ben.
You can't leave them. Facilities and bond update. You're in person. I like that. Thank you.
I am. Brent, if you wait this time. Um, good evening, board, uh, Madam Chair. Um, always a pleasure to speak with you guys. I actually do not have a ton to talk about tonight. Um, we've been super busy getting the staff settled. And um, actually now starting to work on our prep for fall and winter uh, with the facilities. Uh, the rainy seasons coming and things like that. Lots to inspect and, and repair. So we've just been staying really busy doing that stuff. Um, as you know, we're working on the Culver master plan. We're still working on TMS and TES's seismic upgrades. Um, lots of design work going on right now in preparation for next summer. That's all I have. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mentioned earlier tonight about, they're about, you guys are about 50% of the way through the design process for the tennis courts?
Fifty to 60%.
So what's the next step on that one? On that? What, what's the next step? A hundred percent design, I'm sorry.
A hundred percent design and then we would, and then we would go out to bid for it. And uh, and then bring it to you to approve the board.
The nice thing they're working in conjunction with the city as we're, they're doing that design to kind of maximize that time, so.
We'll sign you up.
All right, time for legislative and OSBA, OSBA update.
Oh, I apologize. I had like four days of meetings right in a row. So we had their retreat in Hood River. It was three days. And then I drove down to Salem and went to Pace for half a day and then I came home. So um, as a reminder, the Legislative Roadshow is October 30th um, at the Ashland Hills this year. Uh, we have been, Sarah and I have been working with Scott Beverage and Jessica at SOESD to kind of switch some things up. We've heard from our members down here that um, it maybe doesn't, the roadshow doesn't really suit us as much as it could. So we're trying to make it more regional. Um, OSBA is aware of that. They say they're on board, so I'm, I'm sure they are. But uh, um, and so we're doing that. I think OSBA is going to, is starting to realize they're trying to, we've had big conversations. That's a good segue. We had a focus group um, about the changes. OSBA actually, staff walked out and it was just um, board directors and some consultants. So we talked about some changes that OSBA could make. And there's been surveys. So if you get an email about a survey or you get an email about a focus group, um, your participation is well welcomed because we really want this to be part of everyone to feel like they're part of it. Um, there's, so if you do a caucus, it starts with an advisory committee and then it goes to exploratory committee and then it can go to a caucus. Uh, that's how OSBA is. One, just because you're an advisory exploratory committee doesn't mean you're going to be caucus. That's just the way it is. The reason I'm bringing this up is that's the process the rural schools has gone through. That was voted um, anonymously, so we will start seeing the rural school, for rural schools. I have a slight concern and I found out today, I don't know all, not today, last couple of weekends ago. We get one vote. So if we decide we want rural school, we want a rural school committee, we vote as a board and that counts as one. If Portland Public School decides to vote no, that counts as five. Because they're a bigger district. So the bigger districts could outvote the smaller districts. So it's really important, I'm going to, and Sarah are really going to put the word out that it's very important if you want a rural school committee for OSBA or a caucus for OSBA to vote yes, because um, I've heard the schools over like John Day area, he like, they sometimes just like, we're not going to put a vote out. And that could cause, the question we didn't have was, it has to go three, I think it was three fourths of the vote. Anyways, two thirds, thank you. Two thirds. And we weren't sure if that was two thirds, it had to pass two thirds of all members. We think that's the case or two thirds of all people voting. In the bylaws, it wasn't clear. So we were getting clarification on that. So it's really important. Um, another committee has came up, the LTGBQIA two S plus has, is now from advisory to an exploratory committee. Um, there was some discussion at OSBA about how many caucuses. Um, there was some discussion at OSBA about how many caucuses OSBA could end up having. Because when you have a caucus, then that caucus gives you one member from that caucus on the OSBA board and one member on LPC and how big how big of committee is functional. And um so I don't know. That's something we we have to talk about, but I'm just leaving that up there. Um, Ephraim Zimbudo, I believe is how you say his name correctly. If not, someone let me know. He is taking Richard Donovan's spot. He worked for um under Governor Kate Brown. He worked in the Education Department. It was Lindsey Capps and then he was below Lindsey Capps. When Lindsey Capps left early, Seffron um stepped in for a little bit. He has now moved to OSBA as a lobbyist and we're very, very happy. I met him. He was very, very um very, very nice and very excited. It was on day one. I would think I met him on hour two. So I don't know what hour ten was or whatever, but um NSBA. So Oregon will be the first if we pass the rural school caucus, we will be the first um state in um the for yeah, the first state in all the states to have a caucus for rural schools. It's something that NSBA, the National School Board Association has been realizing that rural schools are sometimes not looked at. And so um Jim Green has been contacted about um working with NSBA and then this caucus goes through the members of the caucus. Um, we'll be talking about that as well. Um, OSBA owns some property. Long story, they own some cottages, parking lots, a building and one of um they're gonna buy out one of the partners that was in there because there's some conflict um with rentals. Um, and let's see. Uh, then there's um for Pace, it was really talking about the importance of pre-loss and understanding um like the products, the pre-loss um that Pace has, which means training people about think about how not to do things is really important and um another topic that was hit up big was board stipends and um boards getting um investigated with the Ethics Committee Commission and also um another thing that I learned this weekend was if you um about boards and um social media. So there's a lot of topics, so we'll probably see those at um OSBA. And if you want to talk with me at home offline with that, we can.
Yes, a very important announcement. Um, I'd like to congratulate Don Watson for um being the OSBA Secretary Treasurer next year. So in addition to serving in her role as a board member, she now is on the executive committee for Secretary Treasurer position. So congratulations and thank you for all of the time and energy and effort that you put into advocating for all students in Oregon. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And I forgot to say, so now we're switching. So the president-elect, which was Sammy, will now be the president. The new president-elect is Chris Pronin from John Day. The uh vice president is Emily Smith from Helix. And then there's me. So that will be our you might get to meet some of those um members at our uh Legislative Roadshow.
Thinking about the structure of how these votes count, right? If you have a big school that it's not a rural district and when they have the majority power with the numbers and they're dictating whether a smaller school, like I'm I'm just curious about the structure and how incongruent it sounds in this process and it continues to make me beg the question of how we structure systems and how those systems continue to perpetuate inabilities for smaller, underrepresented schools, districts to really have a stronger voice and I don't know. I'm not sure if you know any of that, but oh, yeah, I'm just curious. Like it just seems like, I don't know, it's just interesting and it just it bothersome.
It has been discussed many, 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 many times because not only does their vote count, they have more representatives at the table. So if it's with Sarah and I for LPC, um a member was complaining and I was like, oh, they have six, so they have six people in their region. So when they send out the email, they don't know who to send it out. And I was like, well, wouldn't that be nice to have that problem? But um they so on the big LPC meetings, there's six people representing the region and there's only two for us. So that it was relooked at just recently. I was not on that committee. That committee decided that the structure should stay the same. We've had many, many discussions. Um, the argument for this to keep this structure is that there's more students, so there needs to be more voices. I don't a hundred percent. Uh, yeah, I have concerns. I do know that um we I had conversations with the current president and I plan to have conversations with Sammy next that some of the structures they had in the past, um, like when we would have calls with the governor, it was structured very freely. So you could raise your hand. Well, if you have six people that are representing one region and all six get called because they got their hands right first and the other reason and they only are taking ten people. So um that has been looked at. So their OSBA is changing some structures to make it more fair because you know, it's like, okay, two regions could if you've got six, two, two regions could represent the whole hour meeting and then that's not a true representation of Oregon's school board. So they are working on some things and I hope this rural school committee and the voice will be heard, but I agree that there is some system changing that should needs to be further looked at.
We done. The convention that we're gonna all attend, uh, we have to advise Denise of certain things and I'm one thing we have to decide, where do we want to have breakfast? At the Oregon Small Schools or the Capitol Watch? What's the difference? What's gonna be done at each one?
Good question. So I don't know about this meeting, but I do know that Oregon Small Schools, Sarah went one year, she could maybe we're not technically a small school, so it's gonna be vote, it's gonna be focused on school districts that are less than a thousand or eight hundred or something. And so you could go to that, but I don't know if there would be a lot of things that pertain to our district. The Capitol Watch one is gonna talk a lot about what happened in legislation. Um, usually they have a good guest speaker from ODE or the state that will give more information and that's I tend to enjoy those hearing from um the state about what is going on. Usually it's ODE. Sometimes it will be like someone from the governor's office or something like that.
Cool. Thank you. Appreciate that.
No, thank you. It was a great question.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we'll move to Equity, Diversity and Inclusion update. Yeah, have we had? We had a meeting yet?
We did.
Okay.
We had our first meeting and actually I just um huge kudos to Kelly and her team in bringing people together. I love that there's food being served, especially when there's parents and teachers and community members coming together at that time. Um, last year we didn't have that, so it's really nice. So thank you for ensuring that that happens. I love that there's accessibility for participation, so folks can join through Zoom or be there in person. Um, I'm really excited and looking forward to this year and having strong participation, having um a lot of great dialogue and it feels more structured and I love that, right? Like I fully understand that equity and diversity is important, not just that. Um, takes a long time, but I love that we're doing um what we can to ensure that we're moving forward, even though it is like a slow process, so. That's it. And yes, we're meeting on a monthly basis. It's also at the same place every time, just to minimize confusion on where people should go. So I like that. I I like that there's been a lot of consideration to continue to improve this effort. And there was a huge turnout too, so I'm I'm really grateful for that. Um, I'm grateful again for community representation. Um, so I think good things are coming as we continue to do this really hard, hard work.
Yes.
Last year, the focus um was on uh writing an AR for the equity policy. Have you has the committee talked about potential goals for the year or what 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 you're looking to do this year?
Those are really building. I mean, we just had our first meeting and it was kind of like, I mean, angry, let's review what what why we're here, where um, there was, we did identify like our mission and what our goals are and there has been a review, but there hasn't been anything that we deeply um jumped into, so more to come.
Thanks, everyone. Um, we can move to the Audit Committee appointments and I see our wonderful Denise has put a note in here saying during the July twentieth board meeting retreat. Um, just a reminder that committee assignments were um on topic and discuss that Rick and Sarah would be on this committee.
We we do not know. They've been uh in our building all week. Uh, and I just want to commend you as being in our staff. Um, they're I I mean, I've had jury duty a couple of times, but I haven't even uh noticed the Audit Committee and I think they were so prepared coming in and they there's a lot of upfront um questions and things to get prepared and uh it's just it's going smoothly. I don't know when that date will be. Uh, but we'll make sure that we get something that works for both of you, so.
We have room for one more member. We can have three people attend and uh I would encourage somebody to do so if they're so inclined. Give it some thought, everybody.
One more committee.
No. Do one every committee at least once, but I am, yeah, I'm at my I'm at my limit right now. Will say no.
Okay, we can move on to Division twenty-two standards, Brett.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Madam Chair, um, what you have in your packet is actually the official report that we will post. Um, Chris, if you can get that up, that PowerPoint up, that'd be great. Um, I'm just gonna share a little bit. Usually I just put this PowerPoint and the information in your packet, but I'm gonna just go through the slides. We have about ten slides or so that'll just go through. Uh, you guys have lived in the Division twenty-two world a few times. You guys are experienced board members. Um, and so you have a uh kind of an idea with this, but I just want to kind of review this uh for everybody. Um, but just an overview, if you can go, yeah, thank you. I'll get to that third slide would be great. Um, this is basically just a baseline to put all districts on the uh level playing field. Uh, there's a fifty-plus Division twenty-two standards. Um, and to tell you the truth, there are more being considered uh Division twenty-two, so the board can uh kinda discuss that on how to weigh in on um how we feel about that. Um, but it really is a a level playing field for all districts to make sure they meet the minimum standard of serving kids. Um, next slide, please. You can see all the areas uh that the um Division twenty-two covers with curriculum and instruction, assessment and reporting, program and service requirements, high school diploma, and then the health and safety and district performance and human resources and staffing. Um, the report that you have go into more detail of kind of what it is and there's links in there. Uh, I want to say thank you to Denise. Um, she got started on this uh early, started in August. You may remember if you've been on the board a while, we didn't used to do this requirement until the spring and it really didn't make sense to say, hey, where didn't we meet the previous year and what is our corrective action plan? The state wisely said, let's do this before November first. So if you do have a corrective action plan, you can correctively action that uh and make a difference in that same year. And we do have one for the first time uh this year that I'll share. Um, the next slide is just what what are they? It's just accountability model. Um, and that's the timelines you have for reporting to your local community and then re- uh reporting to your state. Why are the why it signals a commitment? Um, again, it puts people on the uh level playing field and it assures the state that we're meeting our obligation to serve kids on what the state decides is the most important aspects of yeah, uh basic education. Next slide. Uh, what happens if a district is out of compliance? We've we've voted, we've had yes, and I'll give away the punchline here pretty quick, but we we didn't meet last year in high school instructional hours. And uh there's a few reasons for that. There was some um um a little bit of accounting and then we did have some time off and we did not have any margin uh for air for a snow day, two hour delay. Those start the things at the high school. So we ended up being less than twenty minutes um than meeting the nine hundred and ninety hours. Um, and so how we corrected that is we come up with a corrective action plan and share it with the state. They look at that to see if that's okay. Report back to us and say, we approve of your corrective action plan. That's great. Our corrective action plan, we already started last spring. We had a scheduling committee that that first and foremost needed to meet the uh state required instructional hours and we have more of a cushion this year. And we're um a lot clearer on our accountability for those instructional hours. Um, speaking of instructional hours, we do have some of the least required instructional hours as a state compared to other states in the country. Um, and that's something that I think we can uh when it comes to legislative time, looking at seeing how we can increase that. It doesn't need to mean you need to hit it on the nose. Um, but people have their schedules and what's what's the minimum requirement uh that that elementary, middle and high school I need to um abide by. So I kinda shared the the those two slides um or actually, yeah, the waivers for this year. Um, you some of this gets a lot of presses of waiving the essential skills for a couple of years. It's looking to be extended uh as well. Um, and then the PDP data collection uh was suspended, but that'll count for this year. The legislature just uh um modified the middle school uh PE requirements, which should be in effect for this school year too, so um which will help. Um, because it'll it'll be kind of an aggregate of minutes rather than specifically weekly minutes. Um, it's kinda shared all in compliance except for the high school uh instructional minutes. Uh, we convened a team and um let's look ahead for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, that I said, shared that the PE uh was passed by the legislature for the middle school, so that'll go into effect. Um, and is it it will be the new requirement for Division twenty-two this year for middle school, which is nice. Um, just so you know, elementary has a lot of minutes too and we use our elementary PE, but we also do some activity brain break stuff that count for PE minutes in class. Um, and so we bought our teachers kits to do some brain uh break and uh exercise activities uh when they're when they're just doing a natural break that fits into the PE standards. Um, the rule changes, um, we talked about uh they they add, I I don't know if they've ever taken away any Division twenty-two standards, but they they can add. Um, but uh proposing extending the uh essential skills and then one they're talking about now is the Menstrual Dignity Act, uh, which is in legislation, but not in the Division twenty-two uh standard, so. Um, that could be a potential change that they're talking to, talking about in the Oregon Department of Education Board makes those decisions. Any questions?
I have one. So um when you're not in compliance, I know you have a year. So if we for some reason got not in compliance in some other category, um, would we that the last one, it would be a fresh new start, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It is, it's per item and uh over the last several years, there were there were districts that actually would meet the requirement, yes, on everything and then really had to send four or five items in one year or two to do that. And some of them were tougher to like curriculum adoption, those types of things that took some time, so. That's a good question, though.
That's exactly what I was thinking, curriculum adoption, because there's some coming down the pipeline and we might not be able to afford like five different curriculums in one year. I mean, they every every po- every time I read about, they're like, oh, well, they have to do what they were quick. And I'm like, yeah, but we don't have to do five curriculums in in like two years, like so that was my my concern because I don't that's a lot of changes.
The next step, again, if I haven't mentioned, thank you to Denise for doing all this organization. She links them in. She gets kudos from the state for how she does that and puts it together. We will uh were uh mandated to have a um open um open the board meeting with public our public session, uh similar to what we do with the Budget Committee. Uh, so we'll have that next time and then that'll be an action item as well, so. Uh, so we'll have that next time and then that'll be an action item as well, so. Um, and we're currently, we're also mandated to have that, uh, which is good in uh, Spanish as well and posted that. And so we're having that translated right now. Thank you to Denise and um, Virginia, Virginia who usually does that. So thank you. That's all I have.
I just have a question. Is this so, it looks like it's so crazy. Uh, uh, I mean, and you, you two are very honorable, but. What's to prevent somebody from uh, saying they're in compliance with everything and uh. Uh, you, you have to support it with the additional information, is that?
Yeah, there's documentation on whether it's policy or uh, system schedules, um, those types of things.
It's a ton of information.
Yeah, it is. And we have a team doing this. It's not, you know, when, I mean, we asked Tiffany, I mean, H R things and um, you know, Kelly with comprehensive counseling. And things of that nature. Um, but yeah, so you have to do the supporting documents with that, um, which has always been the case, so.
Okay, yeah. I was really impressed when I read it last night.
Any other questions? I do have an ask that you could load up his PowerPoint in there, so I could take a look at it later. Yeah, that'd be great. Um, we can move on to, um, I'm excited about this topic, the review of the student representative applications. I know we have those there in our board book that you can look at, the ones that have submitted. I don't know, is the deadline passed now? We have all the people who are going to be applying. That are there. That was one of my questions anyway. Yes, and I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that or no, you don't have to.
And um, there we go. And I met with them all uh, yesterday at lunch, actually, just to make sure they understood what was going on. They're super excited and a little bit nervous. I tried to prep them for the process and what a board meeting looks like and all of that. Um, but they are working through um, the assignment process, which we established last year. Where they're interviewing um, a bunch of students about an event. And then um, we prepared them to answer a singular question using. You know, some of their re- field research um, around that. And so um, a pretty diverse group of students from different walks and different. Know groups, and so I'm really excited for you guys to meet them. Um, and yeah, they're excited, so. If you'd like me to prep them for anything else or if you have questions, um, let me know and I can gather them together again.
I have a question. There, um, one of the students, my assumption is that they've already done some of that field research. Yeah, okay. I was like, wow, there's some information here, but then the other didn't, yeah.
Yeah, so um, I, it's kind of like two processes. There's the application sheet that was sent back to you and like the assignment portion. Um, and because I didn't get to meet with them before, some of them got started on that right away. And so there was a little bit of confusion about what all they needed to turn in, but we did clarify.
So that will be at our next meeting, which is in the morning, right here at the high school. Yeah, I was looking at that. Yeah.
Um, is there a class joining us as well or just the student board candidates? Just because of the timing, how much? So just wondering.
We've had Cornet's class in the past.
And we'll have to look at the new legal instructional minutes calendar to see how it fits in. But um, last year we were able to do a class and then actually do the other student representatives too, so we'll, we'll um, we'll try to have that. I know the board really likes that opportunity to um, get some general questions asked, so we'll work together to see if we can do that and that fits in.
I have a question. Um, in the past, we have talked about this. Um. Do we need to talk about the process of picking someone now or do we? I mean, is that something that we were discussing? I'm just.
I think we should and not wait till next time.
Yes.
I think we should do exactly what we did last year. I think that worked out really well. Yeah, let's, let's refresh our memories about what we were doing.
Yeah, I remember.
If you remind us, please, Rebecca.
Last year, we uh, we met all of the applicants and then we went and had a discussion and then we just told all the applicants that. Uh, got the position, that they got the position and that was, you know, it was pretty straightforward.
Did we use, we used a numbering and did a total?
We did. We all voted ourselves and then we put all those votes together. And then the ones that got the most votes out of all the votes were the ones that we picked.
Okay, so we ranked them.
Yes.
And so we're gonna have that form um, next time, right Denise? Okay.
I think Michael.
Okay, well then we'll have Michael. Okay.
Well, I wonder if she had it from last year. I don't wanna make her do more work. If she had it from last year.
If we have it, we'll, we'll send that out.
If not, we can make Michael do it. He's not here.
And can I ask a question?
We've all and require Michael.
Is, is that something that you would like shared with the um, students so that they know what they're, okay. Can someone send that to me also, so I can share that with them, just so they're prepared?
As far as the.
Like the.
The process.
Like what the process would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, the, I was thinking about the rubric, just because then they'll have a basis for like.
That's beautiful.
When maybe they, if they don't get selected, they'll know why. And maybe if some of them are younger students, they would have some feedback to work on for next year. Like a teaching process a little bit.
I don't, did we put, I don't know that we necessarily put written comments. I think we just assigned a number, value.
But she's asking if we're looking at these certain things. Yes.
I don't think we were looking at a certain criteria. There wasn't like certain things we were voting on, on the students. It was just.
Yeah, so your idea of the rubric was, it's, it was, is more of a system, yeah.
I would say that that would be a wonderful thing to have in the future, but that's my two cents. And we do that every time, right? No, you don't. I appreciate your work on this every time, like, even though it's, it's really helpful that you've taken the time to do this. And meet with those students. It means a lot.
And I think that's a great idea. I mean, clear is kind. I mean, if they are, you know, know what they're coming in, but they have an assignment, so.
Exactly.
And it continues to help us do some process improvement because we're always confused with this process.
Every time.
Always like guessing, going back and forth. So I love, and I love that, you know, there's so much. We use language so frequent, I mean, obviously all the time, but meaning of what something means to different people. We're terrible addicts, so I'm glad that you continued to ask that question.
And I have a quick question about, are we trying to um, have three people that are joining us? We always have this question too.
I think we have decided in, um, I think we had decided in work session that we were going to do three. Unless there was a tie, then, then it would be the board could do four.
I think you're right.
So I think we should continue that. That's just my.
As a reminder, Caitlin, would you send page two of the application of what their assignment was? I was looking on here just as a refresher for us. What, what we asked them to do. Thank you.
Fantastic. I know. It's wonderful how it all comes together.
And on another side, little student rep note for OSBA Roadshow, we are um, opening up. Um, student reps to be able to come and attend um, the regional roadshow. Um, not only ours, but any district is part of our region who has student reps who would like to come are invited to attend as well.
What those dates are.
October thirtieth.
Which we once.
Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah.
And, and they won't need to.
Denise can never leave town again.
It is an option if they want to, if they want to attend. But it was a discussion at OSBA that student reps should, because it's, a lot of the roadshow is about legislation. And a lot of legislators love to hear student voice, and so we kind of thought that that kind of went hand in hand. Um, and we're also planning to do another legislative reception as well, which we would want to involve our student reps. So maybe let them know that the board would like them. Well, I guess that's the conversation we can have. Do they wanna be involved in legislation? Um, throughout the school year. Yeah, exactly. That's a question. Yeah, exactly. And we get that. So anyways, I'm just throwing that out, out there, so.
Anything else? Great. So we added the parade as H seven.
Yes.
Um, talking about that. And I'm grateful for, I've been thinking about this for a long time, like, for several weeks, thinking, are we doing this? Are we? And then Sarah kicked it off by sending an email saying, what are we doing about this? So um, the date of this, can someone help me? Cause I don't have that in front of me. N- n- not November, yeah.
Is it the twenty-fifth?
Okay. No, it's earl- yeah, five.
Yes, please.
So you need another microphone again, sorry. Just mic you up, girl.
Usually Breezy sends us an application, but.
Um, yeah, Breezy's. Okay, so the, the Pirate Country Parade is the Wednesday of Homecoming Week. That is the twenty-fifth. It will start at five o'clock. We have um, already started advertising. Um, you're saying five thirty to me? Okay, between five and five thirty, um, for some reason I'm remembering five. I will send you the flyer to clarify. Um, and we have already started um, advertising. Joe sent out both um, the flyer for people to save the date. As well as um, applications or um, like submissions for floats. Um, we're really excited because our leadership students are also doing a fundraiser for Lahaina Luna High School. And we're partnering with our culinary um, classes who will make like Hawaiian bento plates. Kona Ice is gonna come and we're also selling T-shirts. They're also gonna do a little bit of a cash drive, um, kind of like. Um, I don't remember what it's called, but while they're on the parade, you can give money. Miracle Minute, thank you. So um, those are some of the things that we're doing. Back to the high school, we'll have um, our He-Man volleyball tournament. And then our Powder Puff game. Um, and so it'll be a long night, but it's all here. We'll feed you and all those kinds of things. Um, and then homecoming game is on Friday, the twenty-seventh. And um, our homecoming dance is immediately following the um, football game. It's being hosted by our multicultural club. They have been awesome about getting student voice and choice in creating the theme and um, what games kids wanna play and all those kinds of things. So it's from eight to eleven and they started yesterday. Um, and that's what we're looking at. Happy Homecoming Week.
What a great idea to add food because it's always been a missing.
A draw.
Moment. Um, I know for me, it's like trying to get everywhere and I'm starving by the time the Powder Puff Games start, for sure. A starving me is not a good me, so um, I appreciate that. So um, and then it going to a good cause. So I, I really appreciate and I would like you to pass that on. I don't know whose idea that was, but um, it was great.
Poppy era is amazing, I would say. So we need to ha- decide if we're going to be in the parade and actually how that, how we're gonna show up. Last time it was Michael driving too fast. And some cup, some were in the back of the truck and some were running behind. Yeah, um, so I don't know if we wanna vol and require Michael, cause he's not here. I don't know if he's helping with um, link crew. Um, or if he has a truck available. That's always the thing, right? So maybe outside of here, we can find someone with a vehicle. I have a truck as well, but um, maybe we could figure out how to do that. Dawn?
Conflict of, um, my interest in conflict of scheduling.
Okay.
A conflict of scheduling. I, hopefully I do not have a conflict of scheduling, but it's kinda, we might need to just change anyways. That's another story, but I think there's a conflict that night. But I usually do um, volunteer to buy a lot of candy for passing out candy.
Oh, yeah.
Be more than happy to um, do that again this year. Thank you for that.
Any other thoughts on this? Are you available?
I am available and I think it's really nice to be out in community, right? Like, we. We host these meetings and yes, are open to community, but we don't get to interact with community like that. And I think it's a really integral foundational part.
And maybe I'll wear the shirts we just got the last time. As we're one, right? So maybe they'll, maybe they'll be there by then. I don't know what, I'm pointing to Denise, like. So we can figure that out. But it might be nice if we all wear that shirt together. You can do whatever you want. You are your, you are willing to wear whatever shirt you would like. It's probably a pirate. Okay, cool. I could do that. Look at me, go you. So will you be joining us at the parade? That's what we were talking about just now. October twenty-fifth. Okay, that sounds great. Alright, so we have our next meeting agenda attached. I don't know if we need to say anything about that, but um. That's it for this evening. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.